Okay. Good evening and welcome to our June meeting of the Board of Education, USD 298. Call this meeting the order seven o'clock. Seven o'clock. Okay. Had a chance to look over the agenda before we adopt the agenda. We need to add Mrs. Brenneman as item four G. Go down and make a note. Four G presentation from her in the library. Okay. And Laura, Diddy, I'm sorry. Okay. So you'll be just.
Okay. Very close.
If I could have a motion to add that and adopt the agenda.
The way you add four G and adopt the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, that we adopt the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? All in favor? Host six oh. Okay. Delegations have none. Consent agenda. If you look down the list, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May ninth, 2022, special meeting, May twentieth, 2022, minutes from the special meeting, May twenty fifth, minutes from the special meeting, May twenty sixth, approve the payment of the bills, approve the treasurer's report, clerk's report, accept proceeds from the fundraising activities from alumni weekend for the track renovation project of $2,914, accept a $1,000 donation in memory of Bob Hamilton for the track renovation project, and approve the rec commission minutes. Now hold on. Get ready.
I can send them.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May ninth, 2022, the minutes from the special meeting of May twentieth, 2022, minutes from the special meeting of May twenty fifth, 2022, and minutes from the special meeting of May twenty sixth, 2022. This will also approve the payment of the bills, will approve the treasurer's report, approve the clerk's report, accept proceeds from the fundraising activities from alumni weekend for the track renovation project of $2,914, accept a $1,000 donation in memory of Bob Hamilton for the track renovation project, and approve the rec commission minutes. Any other discussion on any of that? If not, all in favor? Host six oh. Okay. Now, Mrs. Brenneman. Now you're up.
Good evening. I appreciate your time this tonight. First of all, I wanted to let you guys know how active our school libraries are. I kind of made a year in review. I had almost 13,000 checkouts of students this year and staff, and that's an increase from 12% from last year. I manage a collection of over 10,000 books for ages pre-K through fifth grade. I prepare books whenever possible, which happens quite often in an elementary library. I send out overdue notices every month to try and keep so the students can keep track of where things are. Every day, I process all the books for bedbugs. This year, I had 22 library classes a week for preschool through fourth grade for library skills. I prepare lessons for all the classes and present book talks and reading labs to try and increase their love of reading and try and find the right thing that they would like to read. I have many scheduled checkouts and multiple checkouts throughout the day, so it's always pretty busy in there. I also have some other duties. I greeted bus students every morning. I substituted in classrooms multiple times for grades pre-K through fifth, multiple days, multiple times, quite often this year. I also substituted multiple times for lunch supervision and supervised students that did not get to go on field trips. This year, I hosted a CKLS area meeting. CKLS is a free service that we belong to. They have 17 counties in our area. They offer school consultants that can help with any questions we have. I use their services today. We also have meetings. They have a lot of different things that they offer us. I am a CKLS voting member. I've viewed several videos that CKLS has put out for continuing education. This year, they've put out a lot about intellectual freedom. Laura and I both attended the CKLS Springfield Voters Meeting and the School Library Meeting. This year was Mrs. Hill guy's first year, so I trained her on how to use the computer system that we have and any other questions she might have. I find books for teachers' use at their request that they use in the classroom. That happens quite often. And if I don't have a book that a student or teacher has, I try to obtain it through the Lincoln Carnegie Library or interlibrary loan, and then we can check it out from there. The one thing was substituting and the other duties, it takes away from my library. So it does take extra time when students write down the books that they check out, and I have to do all that manually when I come back. My big event this year is this Scholastic Book Fair. It required more time to set up and take down. It was a little bit different this year. It all came in over three UPS boxes that had to be moved and shuffled and arranged on tables. I had students help me move tables and chairs, and I moved all the bookcases to accommodate that. I had over $3,100 in sales and a profit of $1,600. I had free sugar reward, so I used that money to purchase books through Scholastic. I had four junior high and high school students that helped me, and I also made a social media presence during the book fair to get everybody excited about that. One thing that was new to me this year, I organized a guest speaker, Jared Palata, to do a Zoom visit for the whole school. He had two sessions. One was through K through second, and the other was third through fifth. He's a well-known author that presented to us. It was very exciting for the kids. I tried to prep them beforehand. I read one of his books, mini books, to everyone at the classes, and we did an art activity that they could make their own cover, what animals they'd like to see on the Who Would Win series. We had the ability to order a book for every student in the school that he personally autographed, and it made the book so popular. Five of his books are in the top 10 books that were checked out this year. I've got kindergartners that align all of the books up on the floor, and they'll check them all out just to decide which ones are next, and that continued throughout the whole year. So I hope book talks are a possibility in the future. Laura and I have been working on a policy for the school library. School libraries are being challenged more and more for a variety of reasons. Books about lifestyles and language, religion, and war are hot topics of discussion. School libraries may be challenged because of language culturally unfamiliar or maybe historic items like Huckleberry Finn. Authors like Judy Blume, J.K. Rowling, and Suzanne Collins are still showing up on challenge lists. Our mission is to provide literature that supports academic, artistic, and recreational needs of the staff, students, and learning community. We want to have modern services for students. Every library has something that potentially offends someone, depending on how it's read, whether it's a little section, however they do that. We want to be prepared. The Central Kansas Library System has made us aware of how essential a reconsideration policy is for our district. We are proposing the School Library Media Center Collection Management Policy for USD 298. The purpose of this is to develop a system and plan to have in place for a challenge when a challenge occurs so that our school media specialists and administrators will know what to do. The selection policy shows our objectives. We purchase books by teacher requests, the library needs, and student requests too when budget allows. Library staff use reputable review sources and recommendations from other librarians. We use Ingram and Follett School Solutions to purchase books as they can provide the best quality material at the lowest prices. Ingram is through CKLS, and they offer a 15% to 43% discount on retail, and they will also process the books before they send them on to us. So it saves us a lot of money in preparation of the books too. The library reconsideration policy gives us procedures to follow when a complaint has been received. The librarian has seven days to respond. Once a verbal challenge has been received, the next step is to offer a complainant the opportunity to complete the library request for consideration of materials form. Many times, the complainant chooses not to complete the form. Often, the matter dies as the complainant has voiced their concern, and that's all they wanted, someone to listen, and they do not wish to take the matter further. On the form, which you have a copy of, it asks who the complainant represents, whether it's himself, a son or a daughter, an organization or a group. What do you find unsuitable? Did you read the entire book and not just the section that you may have a problem with? What would you recommend your school do with this book? Now, the library media specialist will then notify the principal. The principal then requests a review of the material by a committee within 15 days and notifies the superintendent of the review. The committee may consist of a library media specialist, teacher, one or more parents, and one or more students. The challenged material will remain on the shelves during the review. The committee forms a recommendation, and the principal notifies the superintendent and complainant. A written appeal may be made to the superintendent concerning the committee's recommendation. A written appeal may be made to the school board concerning the superintendent's recommendation. The library will retain or withdraw challenged materials mandated by the decision of the school board. I noticed a lot. A lot of it on the end is just information that's supporting the policy itself that may or may not be included. It's up to you if you choose to go this route. We appreciate your consideration of this policy request. We did find the form that we had in the past, but we did not find anything else that backs it up in what to do. If you have any questions, you can ask either Mrs. Hill or I. CKLS has offered to send a consultant down for the next meeting if you have any questions that you would like to ask them. We appreciate your time.
I was just taking notes. I can put this on the July or August board agenda to give you time to review this packet. We can have further discussion if you would like. I would like to point out that our librarians are our secret support system because everybody thinks they're librarians. But if you look at that list, when we can't find people, I know that Laura has helped extensively with scholarships, and that's the only thing I'm totally aware of, but I'm sure other things. And I know that Mrs. Brenneman is just constantly being pulled because of our predicament with subs and supervision. And so while their title says one thing, their reality is something totally different. And I don't know, the board, I think, really needs to acknowledge how much we appreciate everything that you do outside of your job description because it certainly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks for your presentation. Number five, KSB policy updates. Addendum one. As you know, every June and December, the lawyers send us a list of things that need to be updated. Typically, it's just some verbiage kind of things, nothing major, some language, some different deals. On page one of your packet, at the very bottom, the DB budget planning, this will be something that we'll become very familiar with pretty soon. HB House Bill 2567 is a law that was passed that is going to require the board to review state assessment scores and student achievement prior to adopting a budget. It's going to require us to document our conversations and our analysis on our website. We also have to identify why our students aren't performing at level three and four on the state assessments. And we have to identify as a board what those barriers are that are preventing them from scoring above a level two. And then we have to show where our budget is going to address that lack. So I will go out on an opinion piece here for a second. This is no different than No Child Left Behind, where every student can magically jump over the same height of the high jump, or we'll all become astronauts. I will say this, with my experience in technical education and the CTE, there are students that score ones and twos on state assessments every single year who are very, very successful graduates in a job that they love and they enjoy and is relevant to their world. So this is legislative nonsense, and it will create a tremendous burden on small districts like ours because this office will be dealing with this nonsense like everything else that's coming out of Topeka that has to do with education. People who have no clue about what we do, are passing laws, thinking that it's going to make a difference. So it's irritating, it's irrational, but it is the law, and we will comply, and it will take us away from our intent of our jobs, which is to serve the students of this state and district with local control. So we'll jump through the hoops, but the thinner these stretches, the less effective we are in our jobs. Other than that, the others are just normal policy objects. And I really don't have much of an opinion on it. I'm just, you know, expressing. I'm passionate about our district, and I'm passionate about us taking care of kids, and this pulls our focus away from kids because we already have staff that care about our kids and do our very best for them to excel on any assessment that's out there. And I don't need anybody at Topeka breathing down our neck as if we're not doing our jobs by the crowd or staff.
Taking a cookie cutter approach to an entire state that has so many differences in school size and school ability. It's not fair to put everybody in the same box. As you said, that's why we have local control. Supposed to have.
Anyone else see anything through the policy thing that stuck out or was anything that red flag or say anything about? Okay. If that's the case, then I would say to make a motion to approve all of these. They're just letters, so bear with me. Then I move to adopt the KSB policy, please.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Jessica. Motion by Jason, seconded by Jessica, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve policy BBE, BDA, BG, CEC, CM, CMADB, DC, DFAB, DFAC, DJFAB, EBA, ED, EDAA, FC, GAA, GB, RJ, GCIA, GCRG, IB, IDAE, IF, IIA, IIBGB, ING, JA, JBC, JVE, JCAC, JGCD, JGFF, JGG, JHC, KB, KBA, KGA, KGC, GAF, and ESI. There's one more, but I won't go there. So any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay. Moving on for six, meal prices for the 2223 school year.
Norm and I were looking over all the food service stuff, and we need to, there at this point, even though Governor Kelly has made it clear, I've heard in the Salina newspaper that she is hoping to, that free meals will be continuing, the feds are saying no. And next year, people will be paying for lunches again. And unless we get the appropriate paperwork filled out for free or reduced status, then there will be charges for meals starting next year. There was a lot of superintendent emails and spreadsheets going around, and we looked at those as we were looking at our recommended pricings for those things. I will say that our food costs have gone up quite a bit. So what we're trying to do is still, at least when we get to a charge per meal system, we need to be a nonprofit restaurant, and we need to at least break even and not feed money into food service. So that's our goals with these prices. On the top of that addendum, you can see what we were the last time we did charge for meals. I don't know that those percentage increases will cover where we're heading next year. We have no idea where our food costs are going to be, but they most likely won't go down in the near future. So this, we hope, will cover where we need to be. It is what it is, and if they come out with and extend that, but the word on the street is the feds are done with the free meal programs.
What is the size difference between the elementary school and high school sort of?
Each component is different. It's not just an ounce per ounce. It's if you break things down into like a grain portion and a meat or a meat alternative portion, and a fruit and a veggie portion, and there are different quantities for each grade or each age level.
Five chicken nuggets versus seven or eight, or 10 tater tots versus six or something. There's just some differences there.
So I don't know, for the record, you want me to read those out loud?
That's what I wondered, whether we needed to mention them out loud.
So what we are recommending is that the pre-K through fifth grade breakfast be $1.90, and the lunch be $3.50. The sixth through 12th grade breakfast will be $2, and the lunch would be $3.75. The adult breakfast will be $2.50, and the adult lunch would be $4.50. The extra milk, we did find out we were out of compliance because we were not charging enough for milk or entrees. So in order to be compliant, we need to move our extra milk price to 50 cents, our extra entree to $1.50, and our extra side discharge to $1. And that will, based on our audit, that's where our prices need to be on those items
But this will be set for the whole year? These prices not revised this semester or anything like that?
No, they're not typically, no.
No, there's something gets completely out of whack.
I just question the way things are going, what?
Oh, yeah. It's hard to say. We may have to revisit it. We'll see. But again, I would, you know, if there are programs in place for assistance, because if you have multiple kids in school, this can get a little spindy. So I would recommend highly to whoever's watching this online or whatever, that we will have forms after July 1 to qualify for assistance in either a reduced meal plan or a free meal plan. And that's something that hasn't been in place for the last couple of years. And I would encourage anybody who thinks that they would qualify to fill out those
It looks like we have the prices here.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Seems like a lot to have to pay things like compared to what used to be, it seems like a lot, but I'm sure with the price of everything going up in the end, it may still be still a bit, you know, like other funds, I don't know.
It's possible.
So I suppose we don't have a choice.
This isn't out of line with any surrounding districts in the superintendent. Some of them are lower, some of them are higher, and we just try to kind of pick the mid-range and try to stay within a budget.
That's our move, that we go with these prices.
I'll second.
Bree.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, that USD 298 Board of Education approve the following meal prices for the 202223 school year. Pre-K through five breakfast will be $1.90 and lunch $3.50. Sixth through 12 breakfast will be $2 and lunch $3.75. And then an adult breakfast will be $2.50, and an adult lunch will be $4.50. Extra milk will be 50 cents. And Lincoln Junior Senior High School extra entree $1.50, and Lincoln Junior Senior High School extra side $1. Any other discussion? All in favor? Host six oh.
I might follow up and just say, if you would go anywhere through a drive-through right now, you can't get two combo meals for less than 20 bucks, it seems like. So food costs are a real deal. We're just trying to run a nonprofit system here as best as we can.
Okay. Next, we have Board Meeting Information Dispersment Discussion.
That's kind of a cool title for just, I want to have the board have an opportunity to talk about how we get information out. I think there's been a lot of concern that we're not getting information out or whatever. We've gotten several core requests for records and things such as that. So I just wanted the board to have an opportunity to talk about how we can best communicate what we're doing to anybody who's concerned, stakeholders, community members, whatever. I've asked Greta that we start, and I don't think this needs board's approval, but I've asked Greta that we start posting the agenda and the minutes on our website. I guess prior to COVID, that was done. The minutes will always be a month in arrears because the KSB lawyers recommend that we never post minutes that are not board-approved. So it would be after the board approved those minutes that those could be posted. The other thing that we could have a discussion about as a board is, do you want to continue live streaming? Do you want to continue live streaming and videotaping? Do you want to videotape and upload? Do you want everything? Do you want nothing? Just a chance for you guys to share any feedback that you've got, any concerns, and how we might better, just share information.
Are there any challenges with, associated with IT for doing the live streaming of the meetings that we need to be looking at since we didn't livestream before?
I think the live streaming and or uploading, I'm not sure that.
I think the live streaming and/or uploading, I'm not sure that necessarily needs to be both, but is important for community members who maybe haven't done core requests, don't get on the website, haven't seen the minutes. It gives them the opportunity, maybe they can't be here because they're working or they have, you know, their elderly parent at home with their children, but it gives them the opportunity to see what's going on on a monthly basis within this room. I also think it, you know, helps answer some of those questions. When they're like, why is this filming on? Well, they watch the meeting, and maybe they don't watch it tonight, but they watch it tomorrow. Maybe that will answer their question and kind of alleviate some of the unnecessary phone calls. Not that any phone call is unnecessary, but... breaks down some of that stress. I think posting everything on the website is a phenomenal idea. I think it probably saves school resources. You're not having to print out agendas for people or, you know.
It's not going to be posted until you guys have a chance to have yours. So they'll probably be posted on Monday because sometimes they're going out, right?
That's all right, but I still think, yeah.
The other option that we have, and Greta and I discussed it a little bit today, is, you know, we try to talk about the agenda sometime Wednesday-ish, Thursday, to finalize by Friday. If we decided to have the agenda set by Wednesday, then it could be posted. However, we might be sitting here with several amendments to the agenda. It doesn't necessarily lock us in because we can make those changes, those amendments to the agenda, but there's things that today that we, you know, like the library report. I mean, we don't know what's going to come out, but I'm telling you that, and again, I don't want to sound like we're just down here never coming up for air, but you see some of the responsibilities we have and some of the things that keep getting piled on us. And pulling together a board meeting is a big deal. Getting the agenda set, getting the documents ready for you guys. It is a difficult process, and we work on it sometimes right up until 5:00 on Monday. And then, I know I was here 6:30, Greta was here right after me, and then we continue to get everything set up. It's a big deal with what I call a staff that isn't large enough to do everything that's required of us. But I just wanted you guys to have a chance. You want the agendas cut off on Wednesday and we get them out? Well, we'll do our best to get that done, but we'll probably start the week before then.
Mr. French, is there any other schools around us that are live streaming?
Greta has looked into that, and I can't, nobody in our immediate area is anymore. It's kind of that COVID thing, it's just kind of gone away. We have looked at several other districts, not in this area, but just some that I'm familiar with, to see what they post as far as agendas and minutes and how they do it and where it is on their website and things like that to kind of get prepared for whatever you, the board, might want us to do. And that's not the biggest deal in the world, the agendas and the minutes. But it's just another task.
Yes, I would like to see us, I would like to see us move away with the live streaming. I remember before we did it, and I really don't think it's helped anything. It's no fun hearing bickering going on about our meeting before we even get done with our meeting amongst our employees. There's nobody that has told me they appreciated having a live stream since we knew that.
I think things have changed a little bit since we have the microphones closer and things, but I know that while, you know, during the process of this happening, there have been a lot of times people said, we can't even hear you guys. Or certainly when people are speaking, like when Mrs. Brenna was speaking, you know, they can't hear anything that's going on. There are those who say, yeah, we can tell you there, we don't even know what you're saying or what the other people are saying. So some see the live stream as not overly helpful.
And I would say when we originally went to these just to try to get something for the iPads to pick up, there are boards that could plug directly into something. It's beyond my realm of understanding. But these microphones could be wired into some soundboard thing, which then plugs into something else, which then makes it sound like you're really recording something directly. We've talked about putting a microphone on the podium for presentations. It just, you know, we figure out something if that's, if it's not working. I would like to go back to the savings. If somebody makes a core request, then we are required to give them those documents, and we have several now. So we could post them all over town on telephone poles, and we'd still have to honor those requests and provide documents to people, which is fine. It won't take the place of any of that. But I think it will help us communicate what's going on.
Rich, is there a way to tell on, like if we uploaded to YouTube, how many times that gets watched or how many hits that has? If we did away with the Facebook thing and just did YouTube for a while, and if it was still viewed, we could tell that?
But you can have people start it and stop it, and that counts every time as a view.
I just think with the YouTube thing, you don't quite have the comment section that you do with the Facebook Live probably. It tends to blow out of proportion sometimes. Like you said, people are arguing about things already before we've even gotten done. But if it was still uploaded to YouTube, like you said, somebody would have a chance to do that. But I was just, I was like, so.
I agree with Jessica. You know, some people don't have the opportunity to come here in person to listen and think, yeah, whether they're watching live or watching later, they just don't have the opportunity to do that. But, you know, I don't know, it has to be streamed live at the time. It can be uploaded to YouTube, watched later, still get the content out.
Isn't it typically uploaded the very next day?
Not always, it just depends what Greta has time to do. But not always, Rich will. She tries, but if she's, you know, involved in testing, she can.
And that'll be leaner because Rich won't have a Rich next year. So, you know, things are tighter.
Within a few days, I mean, realistically, within a few days, people would have the information.
I would think by a Friday after a board meeting, would that be reasonable?
Absolutely.
We have the swing table, yes, but it's bad.
And again, I don't think this is a board action kind of thing. I just want to have the discussion and get some feedback and see if there's just agreement that we get agendas and minutes back on our website, something like that. Make a decision on what you want to do with recordings and things like that, and then we could just move forward. I don't think it's a big board action thing because you didn't take board action to record. You just said, hey, we need to be recording our meetings, you know?
I think it's great to have the agenda and minutes out there so people can see that.
And then if they want to come, they think, yeah, that was, I know with COVID, we wouldn't allow more than X number of people, and we were scattered from here to the back wall. But now if people want to come and sit in and listen, they can.
And even if it isn't till that Monday, Greta, that they see, at least they have an opportunity to go see what the agenda is and decide if they want to make plans to attend.
And I think once people become aware that it will be out there at some point on Monday, they'll take a look and if they're passionate about something that's on the agenda, they can make arrangements to get here, and if not, they know, you know, within X amount of days, it's going to be available to watch and go in there.
But I don't, I don't think it's necessary to put the agenda out too far in advance because, like you say, there's a lot of things that happened in the last few days prior to the meeting, and rather than have to make a bunch of, you know, changes to the agenda, then I think right ahead of the meeting, you know, or day in advance type thing is good enough.
But my goal of this whole agenda item was to try to let people know, although you can't convince everyone, there is nothing going on that's funny. There's nothing going on that's hidden. There's no agendas that are under the surface that... There is nothing that anyone cannot know without asking. So, you know, I just want to make sure that the public that we serve understands we are here doing the best for our kids and for our school. And if that sort of information helps to build trust and build confidence in what we're doing, then that's what we do.
Moving on. Insurance renewal.
So you want the good news or the bad news? Oh, there's no good news, sorry, I was mistaken. We have broken the $100,000 annual premium mark this year. And last year, I think we reviewed this historically, and I would say in the last three years, it's probably gone on $30,000. So I can explain to you what's happening now. EMC is our property insurance company. That premium is going up $12,041. And the reason for that is building materials. If anything happened to our building or whether we are insured at actual cash value or replacement cost, all of those materials have gone up. So for them to insure our facilities at a rate that will actually get them fixed, that insurance is going up $12,041. Our workers' comp, there's a thing called an EMOG rating, which is our tendency to file worker's comp claims. We previously were at a 1.22 EMOG, and that has moved to 1.69 because last year we had a $50-plus thousand worker's comp claim. So that increase on our workers' comp is going up $6,345. The good news, which isn't good this year, but will be possibly next year if everybody's safe and we don't have a lot of claims, we have a three-year history, and we have an over $50,000 claim that will be coming off next year, and it will drop off as it ages out. But as of now, we're looking at $18,386 in premium increases. The total will be $101,907 for our insurance. So when somebody jokes that I'm a tightwad, that's true because everything is going up around us exponentially. So we have to be able to figure out how to bill. There is a possibility workers' comp is being run by another company to see if we can get either a better rating or just a reduced premium. We don't have that information yet, but what we need to do tonight is recognize again that the, you know, the agency to be our agent of record, and then this premium, but it may be less than this premium if we can save money with the workers' comp. Gage has been working pretty hard, and he's shopping around on that workers' comp, see if we can get a better rate. Our current company is the 6345 increase.
Any questions or comments on that?
If not, we would take a motion to appoint the Davidson Agency as agent of record for 2223 fiscal year and approve payment of the total insurance package of $101,907.
I shall move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that the USD 298 Board of Education appoint the Davidson Agency as agent of record for the 2022-2023 school year, fiscal year, and approve payment of the total insurance package of $101,907. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six of them.
Okay. Next, we have board seat appointment discussion. I don't care.
Okay. We've been in contact with Topeka, trying to figure out what it takes to make an appointment of a board seat with the resignation of Mr. Knowles. When a vacancy occurs, a replacement can be appointed by the board. After the board accepts resignation, the board must publish a notice in the newspaper that a vacancy has occurred, and the vacancy will be filled by appointment not sooner than 15 days after the publication. So we have to publish this in a newspaper, and we can't do it any sooner than 15 days after we publish it. So basically, if we approve to publish the vacancy, take applications now, we could look at those in July. So is there more on this that we need to read through or?
Not really.
Okay.
Just the questionnaire that was provided by Topeka, if anybody is interested.
Yes, we have questionnaires, different questions that we can ask of the candidates. Everything, anybody that applies, and I guess those that are listening that would like to apply for the seat. None of this will be done in executive session. Everything will be in open session. All questions, all discussion applicants will sit in because you are elected personnel, not non-elected personnel. So we can look at that. Any other questions that you guys have?
We don't have to fill the spot, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if we don't, then is it, to my understanding, this fall's election?
It would be...
We'll fill it?
No, you would not get on the ballot this fall, right? It would be 23, a year from...
Fall of '23?
Yes.
Okay.
So next June would be the chance to, or would be the final. That would coincide with the rest of us that are up for election. And then...
It would only be a two-year term?
But it would only be a two-year term, and then it would fall back on its normal cycle, so.
Thank you. What position would it be?
Okay. It's District, Board Member District 1, Position 5, is what we will put on the publication in the paper. So, and that's a city, city position, in town. It says on here, if the vacancy occurs prior to May 1st of the second year of the term, which it has, and there are more than two years remaining of the term, the board-appointed member shall serve until the second Monday in January after the following general school election. So if the appointed member wishes to continue, if you're appointed and you wish to continue, you would have to file next June to run, and then you would have to refile in two years if you wanted to continue after that.
And it is the duty of the board to go through this interview process and determine if the applicant or applicants are a good fit for the board and if your opinion would be that they would be good board members because there is no requirement to accept, and you can leave it open for applications. Once the 15-day deadline is over, you can leave it open for applications until a point when the board feels like the applicant is a fit for the current, whatever you call it, system.
If we got two applicants and they weren't approved at the next meeting, we would leave it open, and you could apply again until, and then at the August meeting, we would look again at who to file or whatever.
I think it's important that we get the publication out there in the paper and start accepting applications when they're all elected. And I think it is our duty to try and fill the elected seat as efficiently as we possibly can.
So when you put something in the paper, you just say USD 298.
We have all kinds of forms. We have to sign resolutions and we have to publish and do things.
That's a good thing that you put on the board rating. Is that, didn't you fill somebody's term?
Yes, I filled Chad Walter's term. But, I mean, they did have to decide at a meeting that, that, you know, the initial paperwork that I was sent out to fill out to apply for the position, I said, forget it. I'm not doing this. It's like a 15-page thing of everything from my IQ to my blood type to you name it. And do you have any family that was ever from Zimballway? I mean, it was ridiculous when I said, I'm not filling this out. Never mind. I'm not doing it. And so then they talked to KSB and they said, well, yeah, it's more for large districts who have a lot of, have more and need to really, they don't even know the people that are applying per se. So then it was a kind of a part-down thing that they, as the questions I sent, I sent in my responses to those and.
Negotiated pay.
Yeah, not negotiated pay, but you, that was, that was the one you're there.
All three of these will go in.
Okay. Resolution where as a vacancy exists in the district of, our district 298, Lincoln, Kansas, 252022 authorizes the Board of Education to fill such vacancies no sooner than the 15 days following publication of notice in the newspaper. Be resolved that the clerk of the Board of Education of 298 shall cause such notice to be published. So that's just signing off that they publish it. Notice is hereby given pursuant of provisions 2522 of a vacancy in the membership of the Board of Education, school district number. And I assume that's where we would fall on. District one, position five, Lincoln County, Kansas. And that such vacancy will be filled by appointment of the Board of Education not sooner than 15 days following publication of this notice. The appointed member will serve the remainder of the unexpired term in this position. This one goes to you.
It's that they wouldn't actually serve the remainder of the unexpired term. They would only serve until next year.
Till the next.
Election.
The appointed member will serve the remainder of the expired term. The appointed member will serve in this position until the next general election. So there, so the second one, here it is. Gotcha. I was like, most of this says the same thing, but that is the difference. There it is. Applicants must reside in this member district. So.
If the length of service had been long enough to fulfill the rest of the term, it would have been that first notice. So.
Okay. There's one. We need a motion then to approve opening applications for board member district one, position five, after publication of said paper in the official, in the approved official newspaper for legal publication. So I would assume that's the link.
I'd say move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Bree, that USD 298 Board of Education approves opening applications for board member district number one, position number five, after publication in the approved official newspaper for legal publication. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Six oh.